We'll call a committee of the whole meeting for the Elgin City Council for June 8th, 2022 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rouschenberger?
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of a minutes of the previous meeting of May 25th, 2022. Salute?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Abstain.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motions approved 7-0 with one abstention. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Item A is the Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan for Program Year 2022. The city since 1975 has received almost $41 million in CDBG funds from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Over the last five years, the city has been using these funds to improve neighborhood parks, streets, and not-for-profit facilities, redevelop quality affordable housing, and provide services to address homelessness. For Program Year 2022, the city received three applications from area nonprofits for facility development projects and homelessness supportive service activities. Additionally, neighborhood infrastructure, affordable housing, and park projects were reviewed and considered. The city expects to receive just over $1 million in CDBG funds to be available in Program Year 2022. Scott Berger, the city's partner at Kane County, along with Community Development Director Mark Molot, are here to provide any additional information the council may have regarding the recommended allocations.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Ms. Powell?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Captain. This question is for our staff and Mr. Berger. If, I know a lot of people are not really, they hear about CDBG but really don't understand what it is and what types of projects are eligible and some of the parameters, and I know Mark and I have talked about this before, if you can just kind of give us a quick two-cent version, and specifically, Mr. Berger, if you can talk about the program through Kane County, which I'm always excited about how that works and how residents can access that.
Thank you for the question, councilmember. In a nutshell, the Community Development Block Grant Program was put in place in the mid-1970s primarily to help low-to-moderate income persons with traditional brick-and-mortar type of applications. On any annual allocation, 85% of that has to go to those projects that kind of have a physical presence that come out of the ground. Federal government does give you the opportunity to allocate up to 15% of that for programs and services. That's it in a nutshell. I'll let Scott kind of take it from there.
Very good nutshell. Thank you.
Right, so I think your question had to do with access to the program. Are you curious about our outreach efforts and what we do to inform potential applicants of the program and how to navigate it?
That as well, but I know that you guys have used some of this money to rehabilitate homes right here in Elgin, and maybe that process that people, you know, how many homes you anticipate doing in the project year and how residents might be eligible or apply to purchase those homes.
So yes, one item you'll see in the budget proposal that's before you tonight is the Affordable Housing Fund, and the city of Elgin contributes, has done so for the last four years, to that fund. Our office does manage the Affordable Housing Fund. It provides gap financing for the development or redevelopment of affordable housing, including properties here in Elgin. And so we have redeveloped a number of properties. The nice thing about those projects is that when they're sold, they generate program income, and part of your budget proposal tonight does include program income that the city received resulting from those projects.
Great. And are the homes actually selected by the county, or say if I'm a resident and I find a house that I'm interested in purchasing, is there a way for them to access that fund through that program, that way?
So, so two answers to your question. First of all, one of the programs that we manage under the Affordable Housing Fund is the First Time Home Buyer Assistance Program, and under that program, we can assist with down payment and closing cost assistance as a zero-interest deferred payment loan. When the property is sold someday, those amounts come back to the program and are recycled back into to provide additional assistance to new homeowners. Regarding the redevelopment of properties, we work with private sector developers. We don't acquire the properties directly. We, we're the bank, basically. We finance the project. They do a search for properties. I will tell you right now, there's not a great supply of available properties, and then with our approval, they do make the purchase on our behalf.
Great.
Those are traditionally done through the Kane-Elgin Home Commission. The great example of that was the one done by Spillane over at Spring and Franklin where they redeveloped those properties. That's probably the best single-family example of that, although he did one at 480 Park Street, if I recall the address correctly, which turned out really, really nice, so.
I remember the ones on Spring. That's what comes to mind, so thank you. Appreciate the answers.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? Very none. Clerk please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-0.
Item B is an economic incentive agreement with Elgin Motors Incorporated doing business as Elgin Kia. Kia Motors is requiring Elgin Kia to make capital improvements to its Elgin facility to comport with the current corporate image program. Elgin Kia is agreeing to relocate its current Elgin dealership to the Randall 90 Auto Mall at Interstate 90 in Randall in return for a 50% share of the sales tax generated by the automobile dealership for a 15-year term. Graduated real property tax rebates available to all dealerships locating within the auto mall, and fast-track permitting, and a waiver of building and development permit fees for its capital improvements. Chuck Weck, Principal with the Weck Automobile Group, is present today, and he asked me to have the ability to approach the council and convey his appreciation for the council considering this proposed economic incentive agreement. Mr. Weck? Remember the first time we went, Mr. Weck? Do you remember, Mayor, when he came in as part of Naples Group?
Yes, we've been doing business in Elgin for a few years, and we're looking forward to building a bright new building for the Kia franchise. I brought some pictures if we can pass them out, if that's okay.
Sure.
So basically Kia has a program where they want to have a new bright exterior look for the Kia franchise, and a lot of the look is very modern, and it's got kind of a cantilevered front on it, which is really cool, and, you know, feeds into their whole program of modernization, electrification, and some of the other things that they've got going on, so it's been quite a good brand. Volume on Kia is going up year over year, and we're looking forward to getting into the new buildings to serve the customers better.
We need a motion? Move for approval?
Second.
It's moved and second for approval. Any questions for Mr. Weck or staff? I'm gonna have a comment for you, and I'm gonna challenge you a little bit, and I see that you anticipate, or you had year-to-year growth of 97% on electric vehicles, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's a new trend for Illinois and for Elgin, and I'd like to ask you for some assistance. We have a sustainability commission, and we've had discussions on charging stations, and I think we could use input, and where charging stations are located, how we have made best use of that. We're gonna be probably getting some federal funds coming into the area, and I'd like to be proactive and say, here's, we have a plan as to what we want to do, and if you're having that kind of growth in vehicles, I think it would be to your advantage to help us out.
Okay, so basically the plan for the dealership, and I'll just, it's relevant to your question, okay? So there's two types of charging handles right now, and there's a certain charger that accommodates both. It's kind of like a T-structure with two handles on the side, which is the right thing to have, even though Kia uses one, and for example, our Volkswagens use the other one, so you want to have both of those, okay? Obviously having bollards in front of the thing to block somebody from crashing into your new charging station would be helpful, and our decision is to put the, put the charging station right out in front of the dealership so that we can have access, you know, the customer can have access immediately to getting in charge as quickly as possible, because that's the whole game, is how quick can you get them plugged in, because it takes a long time to charge them if you're gonna charge them fully.
Yeah, and we may, we had a proposal for improvements to our parking lot, probably about four or five months ago, and as part of that, the, we're gonna plan for charging stations, and we're gonna put in the infrastructure and the electricity, and I think that's our plan moving forward, and as a need, but we probably would need some help as to what kind of stations that would be most advantageous to us and be the most universal use, because that's something that a community would have. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm not sure, maybe you quite understood the mayor's question. So the city of Elgin has a sustainability commission made up of residents of Elgin, and so I think what he's saying is, how can your business with some of your expertise, some of Kia's expertise, be involved in that sustainability commission to help guide our plans to develop electrical charging in our community? That's what I think the ask is. So I get that you're doing some things at your own facility, but I think what we're asking is, can, how can you use your expertise with the city of Elgin? You know, the city's doing a little bit of a stretch here with this incentive agreement. It's a little bit different, it's a little bit extra with some of the, both on the sales tax side as well as the real estate, as well as some of the development fees, and so what we're saying is, how can you reciprocate some of the knowledge possibly from your environment back into the community?
Okay, so we're, we're learning real time about this as it goes on. This is all new ground for us, okay? So, and we're just in the process, we're about two months from finishing our Volkswagen building, which is going up in Palatine, and this is the period of time where we're gonna be literally installing all of this stuff, so I have no problem sharing all that information and all the specifications and anything that might come up from Volkswagen or Kia that would assist with that, and certainly if there's some, you know, we've got, my service director is, you know, very hands-on involved with the specification of what these charging stations and all that, and also as far as the actual, you know, electrical load that's necessary for them, so I'm more than happy to share any of that stuff.
Okay, Mr. Colesley, why not?
You must have been looking at my calendar. Assistant City Manager asked me to join her in a meeting with the city's Sustainability Officer, our Public Works Director, and our Fleet Director. We're scheduled to have an initial meeting on the proposals that we're gonna be bringing forward to the, to the council on our electrification initiatives within the city. I know how to get ahold of Chuck. Chuck knows how to get ahold of me, and I appreciate your willingness to share with other information that you have, and we will use you as a resource going forward so we can make the most beneficial decisions for the city. Thank you for that.
I'd be proud to do that, for sure. And I'll bring my Service Director, Paul, with me, and again, for the nuts and bolts of actually how that works.
Okay, Ms. Powell?
Thank you. I see a lot of Kias on the road, so I believe everything you've said in terms of growth in your sales, and that's exciting. Two things. I'm assuming that you, you'll have, the way your facility is going to be facing, will it directly face Randall Road?
Yes.
Okay, which is important, or will it face 90, or both?
No, it's, so if you're featuring where the Honda store is and where Volkswagen, right in between.
Okay.
So we're gonna be a little setback for, we're not gonna be setback more than Honda, about the same setback as Honda facing towards Randall. Of course, our access, and this is something that we're talking about in the moment also is, you know, how to access the lot, okay? So my preference is basically you drive down what is called Mall Drive.
Right.
You make a left-hand turn, and you come in and access into our, directly into our lot, as opposed to making a U-turn and then coming in on the side of, on the eastbound side of Mall, that Auto Mall Drive.
Okay.
So we're trying to, we're trying to make it so people are, you know, making a U-turn, and even more so, we're gonna have, so they're gonna come in the lot, they drive around in front of the building into the service, as opposed to making a U-turn, making a U-turn, you know, this is cut down on, you know, crashing, crashing their cars or crashing their cars.
Absolutely. Want to keep things safe.
Oh, yeah.
To piggyback on the mayor's challenge or question, I kind of want to up the ante on that a little bit, because as Councilman Shaw pointed out, this is a bit of a stretch for what we normally do on our economic incentive agreements. I would actually like to see Kia sponsor a couple of charging stations within our community. I recognize that you may not be in a position to answer or commit to that right now, but that is something I would like to see before we do final approval on this. As we look to expand our charging stations throughout the city, I think that would be a nice partnership to do with Kia in our community. So if you would consider that, I would love to see that part of the proposal when it comes back to us. Thank you.
You're okay with me not trying to get him to sponsor the supercharging facilities that go for excess of $300,000? That's not what you had in mind, is it? I'm teasing, I know, no. We'll, we'll-
Didn't say that. No.
We'll talk, Mr. Powell. We'll talk with your council, and we'll work out something so we can add those provisions in the agreement, and we'll describe that for the council coming back in the next meeting.
Of course. I mean, we've been, we have been very supportive of things locally up until this time, so I really don't, you know, a modest-sized charging station is not, not a big issue. We can buy them along with what we're specifying for the dealership.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 8-0. Congratulations.
Item C is an agreement with Duff Entertainment for operational services relating to the 2022 Nightmare on Chicago Street event. This year's event is scheduled to occur on October 22nd, and planning, as we know, is now underway. A portion of that planning includes securing a vendor to facilitate the gate, ticket, and security operations, and RFP to provide these services was published, and Duff Entertainment is the sole respondent. That's not a bad thing, because Duff has been providing these services for the city since 2017.
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and second for approval. Any discussion? Mr. Stefan?
Just a quick question, and Rick, if you don't have the answer, I'll get it later, but what was the cost for Duff the last time that they did this last 20 years?
Yeah, I'll get that for you later. I don't know, off the top of my-
I forgot to ask, and I thought of it as I was here, so.
Ms. Powell, you have a question?
That was part of my question, because that's usually something that's included, but what my other question was, I think that they also provided a proposal to be the beer vendors as well, correct?
Yeah, but not as part of this. That's a separate RFP.
Okay. And we have not, because that hasn't come before us yet.
That's correct.
Okay.
Nor has the decision been made, and that's why it hasn't done come.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
No.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 6-2.
Item D is change order number one to the Bowes Creek Clubhouse Patio Project. As we know, the Bowes Creek is located within a residential development comprising of 900 homes. While the city operates the golf course and the restaurant, Johnny Supper Club for the golf patrons, the surrounding residents certainly make use of the facility as well. The pandemic identified the particularly attractive amenity that is the outdoor patio at the, at Johnny Supper Club. Improvements were made, recommended to the council last year to expand that area to accommodate the greater demand for outdoor seating. During the course of construction, additional shortcomings were identified relating to window repairs, concrete repairs, conduit, tree removal, and upgrades to heaters and fans in the pergola. That amounts to $16,000 and is the subject of the requested approval for the change order at this improvement.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved to second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Abstain.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motions approved 7-0 with one abstention.
Item E is a professional services agreement with Smith Group Incorporated for the proposed improvements at the Elgin Sports Complex. Mayor, I'm asking if you may be willing to entertain a motion to table this item at this time.
Entertain a motion to table this item. Motion to table?
Second.
It's been moved and second to table. Court please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion is tabled. Announcements from the council? None? Announcements from staff?
None, Mayor, thank you.
We have no announcements. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute?
Second.
Moved and second to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. We'll reconvene at the regular council meeting at 7:00 P.M.
Wow.
Yes, we are adjourned, we'll reconvene at the regular council meeting at 7:00 P.M.[101.11]
All the regular meeting for the Elgin City Council for June 8th, 2022 to order. Will you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the court please call the roll?
Councilmembers Dixon?
Here.
Good.
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschberger?
Here.
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Thorne?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 25th, 2022. Salute.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Abstained.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 7-0 with one abstention. We have one communication this evening. I'm going to ask Ms. Powell to read the proclamation.
If members from the African American Coalition for Kane County can join me at the podium, please. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves and Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was intentionally delayed some two and a half years in reaching enslaved Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas, it was on June 19th, 1865, that Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas, June 19th has a special meaning to African Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African American community for over 150 years. And whereas, Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, is considered by many to be the longest-running African American holiday and is often referred to as America's second Independence Day. And whereas, Juneteenth became a legal federal holiday in 2021 and is also a legal state holiday in Illinois. And whereas, Juneteenth observations and celebrations are held throughout the nation and is a symbolic date celebrating African American freedom, culture, equal rights, and unity in the United States. Now, therefore, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, do hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth in the City of Elgin and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African American history and in the heritage of our nation and city.
Right on.
All right, I'd like to speak on behalf of the AACKC, the African American Coalition of Kane County, and a number of sponsors, one of which is the Elgin Cultural Arts Commission, on Saturday, June 18th, in Festival Park. And also on Sunday, June 19th, in Festival Park. Lots of entertainment for the young, old, and everybody in between. Food trucks, just all kinds of things. So come down, celebrate. Definitely looking forward to bringing this back to Elgin. I can't remember the last year that we actually had the Juneteenth event in Festival Park, but I want to say it was prior to, like, June, it was probably 2017. So it's been a while. So definitely looking forward to it. All are welcome and hope to see you in Festival Park. And all of the elected officials, there will be a welcome ceremony at noon on Saturday. You're all welcome to attend that. And hopefully I can get the mayor to read the proclamation at the event. Thank you.
I'd like to give a shout out to Janice Hare. I understand she's been a bit under the weather and hasn't, I got an email or a text message from her daughter. And I've had some things planned with her and she's been having a little, some health issues. So I wish her well. Recover fast because the city needs you. Hey, brings us to bids. We have bid number 22-030, Big Timber Road Retaining Wall Improvement.
Mayor, make the motion aboard the bid to Landscapes by Gary Weiss in the amount of $206,770.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Here.
Martinez?
Here.
Powell?
Here.
Rauschberger?
Shaw?
Here.
Stefan?
Here.
Mayor Captain?
Here. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting of May 25th, 2022. Salute.
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any corrections or additions? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Abstained.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 7-0 with one abstention. We have one communication this evening. I'm going to ask Ms. Powell to read the proclamation.
If members from the African American Coalition for Kane County can join me at the podium, please. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves and Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was intentionally delayed some two and a half years in reaching enslaved Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas, it was on June 19th, 1865, that Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas, June 19th has a special meaning to African Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African American community for over 150 years. And whereas, Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, is considered by many to be the longest-running African American holiday and is often referred to as America's second Independence Day. And whereas, Juneteenth became a legal federal holiday in 2021 and is also a legal state holiday in Illinois. And whereas, Juneteenth observations and celebrations are held throughout the nation and is a symbolic date celebrating African American freedom, culture, equal rights, and unity in the United States. Now, therefore, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, do hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth in the City of Elgin and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African American history and in the heritage of our nation and city.
Right on.
All right, I'd like to speak on behalf of the AACKC, the African American Coalition of Kane County. My president, Shirley Bassett, myself, Vice President Earl Dickens. We both stand here in honor of this proclamation that you have all put into order and into law in this region. First, I'd just like to say to all the people who have come together to help this become a reality, I want to thank everyone who's played a part in this role. Second of all, I can't speak for the entire African American community or the former slave community, but I'd like to say for myself, for my constituents, for all of those friends and family, I'd like to say that this day should be in great honor and great reverence to how far we've come as citizens of this country. The other thing I'd like to say is going forward, I'd like everyone here to please get familiar with what Juneteenth is about. Not the political stuff, not the stuff, the rhetoric and the news, not everybody jumping on the bandwagon with salads and all these other corporate profitization things. Get in tune with what it means for you, your personal lives, your family lives, and in your heart. Second of all, I just want to say this shortly, which is I thank everybody that's involved with helping this festival take place. It has been long overdue with the parades that we've been putting on for the former couple of years because of COVID, to now opening up the City of Elgin to allow us to celebrate and full festivities. So on that behalf, I'd like to say to you all, thank you.
Thank you. So one thing that Earl left out is there is a Juneteenth celebration here in Elgin that is being put on by the African American Coalition of Kane County and a number of sponsors, one of which is the Elgin Cultural Arts Commission, on Saturday, June 18th, in Festival Park, and also on Sunday, June 19th, in Festival Park. Lots of entertainment for the young, old, and everybody in between. Food trucks, just all kinds of things. So come down, celebrate. Definitely looking forward to bringing this back to Elgin. I can't remember the last year that we actually had the Juneteenth event in Festival Park, but I want to say it was prior to, like, June, it was probably 2017. So it's been a while. So definitely looking forward to it. All are welcome and hope to see you in Festival Park. And all of the elected officials, there will be a welcome ceremony at noon on Saturday. You're all welcome to attend that. And hopefully I can get the mayor to read the proclamation at the event. Thank you.
I'd like to give a shout out to Janice Hare. I understand she's been a bit under the weather and hasn't, I got an email or a text message from her daughter. And I've had some things planned with her and she's been having a little, some health issues. So I wish her well. Recover fast because the city needs you. Hey, brings us to bids. We have bid number 22-030, Big Timber Road Retaining Wall Improvement.
Mayor, make the motion aboard the bid to Landscapes by Gary Weiss in the amount of $206,770.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Abstained.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 7-0 with one abstention. We have one communication this evening. I'm going to ask Ms. Powell to read the proclamation.
If members from the African American Coalition of Kane County can join me at the podium, please. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring the slaves and Confederate territory free, paving the way for the passing of the 13th Amendment, which formally abolished slavery in the United States of America. And whereas, word about the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation was intentionally delayed some two and a half years in reaching enslaved Americans in the South and southwestern United States. And whereas, it was on June 19th, 1865, that Union soldiers led by Major General Gordon Granger landed in Galveston, Texas with news that the war had ended and to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas, June 19th has a special meaning to African Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African American community for over 150 years. And whereas, Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, is considered by many to be the longest-running African American holiday and is often referred to as America's second Independence Day. And whereas, Juneteenth became a legal federal holiday in 2021 and is also a legal state holiday in Illinois. And whereas, Juneteenth observations and celebrations are held throughout the nation and is a symbolic date celebrating African American freedom, culture, equal rights, and unity in the United States. Now, therefore, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, do hereby proclaim June 19th as Juneteenth in the City of Elgin and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African American history and in the heritage of our nation and city.
Right on.
All right, I'd like to speak on behalf of the AACKC, the African American Coalition of Kane County. My president, Shirley Bassett, myself, Vice President Earl Dickens. We both stand here in honor of this proclamation that you have all put into order and into law in this region. First, I'd just like to say to all the people who have come together to help this become a reality, I want to thank everyone who's played a part in this role. Second of all, I can't speak for the entire African American community or the former slave community, but I'd like to say for myself, for my constituents, for all of those friends and family, I'd like to say that this day should be in great honor and great reverence to how far we've come as citizens of this country. The other thing I'd like to say is going forward, I'd like everyone here to please get familiar with what Juneteenth is about. Not the political stuff, not the stuff, the rhetoric and the news, not everybody jumping on the bandwagon with salads and all these other corporate profitization things. Get in tune with what it means for you, your personal lives, your family lives, and in your heart. Second of all, I just want to say this shortly, which is I thank everybody that's involved with helping this festival take place. It has been long overdue with the parades that we've been putting on for the former couple of years because of COVID, to now opening up the City of Elgin to allow us to celebrate and full festivities. So on that behalf, I'd like to say to you all, thank you.
Thank you. So one thing that Earl left out is there is a Juneteenth celebration here in Elgin that is being put on by the African American Coalition of Kane County and a number of sponsors, one of which is the Elgin Cultural Arts Commission, on Saturday, June 18th, in Festival Park, and also on Sunday, June 19th, in Festival Park. Lots of entertainment for the young, old, and everybody in between. Food trucks, just all kinds of things. So come down, celebrate. Definitely looking forward to bringing this back to Elgin. I can't remember the last year that we actually had the Juneteenth event in Festival Park, but I want to say it was prior to, like, June, it was probably 2017. So it's been a while. So definitely looking forward to it. All are welcome and hope to see you in Festival Park. And all of the elected officials, there will be a welcome ceremony at noon on Saturday. You're all welcome to attend that. And hopefully I can get the mayor to read the proclamation at the event. Thank you.
I'd like to give a shout out to Janice Hare. I understand she's been a bit under the weather and hasn't, I got an email or a text message from her daughter. And I've had some things planned with her and she's been having a little, some health issues. So I wish her well. Recover fast because the city needs you. Hey, brings us to bids. We have bid number 22-030, Big Timber Road Retaining Wall Improvement.
Mayor, make the motion aboard the bid to Landscapes by Gary Weiss in the amount of $206,770.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Court, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 8-0. Brings us to other business. The first item is a public hearing of petition, petitions 08-220, 09-22, and 10-22, 2600 to 2800 North Randall Road, an annexation preliminary final plan of subdivision and plan development as a map amendment for the construction of a three-building light industrial subdivision with the extension of Bussey Parkway. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property, there we go, is located at the southwest corner of Randall Road and Route 72. Here is Randall. There we go. This is Route 72.
with news that the war had ended and to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation. And whereas June 19 has a special meaning to African-Americans and is called Juneteenth, combining the words "June" and "19th", and has been celebrated by the African-American community for over 150 years. And whereas Juneteenth, also known as Freedom Day, is considered by many to be the longest-running African-American holiday and is often referred to as America's Second Independence Day. And whereas Juneteenth became a legal federal holiday in 2021 and is also a legal state holiday in Illinois. And whereas Juneteenth observations and celebrations are held throughout the nation and is a symbolic date celebrating African-American freedom, culture, equal rights, and unity in the United States. Now, therefore, David Captain, Mayor of the City of Elgin, do hereby proclaim June 19 as Juneteenth in the City of Elgin and urge all citizens to become more aware of the significance of this celebration in African-American history and in the heritage of our nation and city.
Right on.
All right, I'd like to speak on behalf of the AACKC, the African-American Coalition of Kane County. My president, Shirley Bassett, myself, Vice President Earl Dickens. We both stand here in honor of this proclamation that you have all put into order and into law in this region. First, I'd just like to say to all the people who have come together to help this become a reality. I want to thank everyone who's played a part in this role. Second of all, I can't speak for the entire African-American community or the former slave community, but I'd like to say for myself, for my constituents, for all of those friends and family, I'd like to say that this day should be in great honor and great reverence to how far we've come as citizens of this country. The other thing I'd like to say is going forward, I'd like everyone here to please get familiar with what Juneteenth is about. Not the political stuff, not the stuff, the rhetoric and the news, not everybody jumping on the bandwagon with salads and all these other corporate profitization things. Get in tune with what it means for you, your personal lives, your family lives, and in your heart. Second of all, I just want to say this shortly, which is I thank everybody that's involved with helping this festival take place. It has been long overdue with the parades that we've been putting on for the former couple of years because of COVID, to now opening up the City of Elgin to allow us to celebrate in full festivities. So on that behalf, I'd like to say to you all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So one thing that Earl left out is there is a Juneteenth celebration here in Elgin that is being put on by the African-American Coalition of Kane County and a number of sponsors, one of which is the Elgin Cultural Arts Commission, on Saturday, June 18, in Festival Park, and also on Sunday, June 19, in Festival Park. Lots of entertainment for the young, old, and everybody in between. Food trucks, just all kinds of things. So come down, celebrate. Definitely looking forward to bringing this back to Elgin. I can't remember the last year that we actually had the Juneteenth event in Festival Park, but I want to say it was prior to, like, June, it was probably 2017. So it's been a while. So definitely looking forward to it. All are welcome and hope to see you in Festival Park. And all of the elected officials, there will be a welcome ceremony at noon on Saturday. You're all welcome to attend that, and hopefully I can get the mayor to read the proclamation at the event. Thank you.
I'd like to give a shout out to Janice Hare. I understand she's been a bit under the weather and hasn't, I got an email or a text message from her daughter, and I had some things planned with her, and she's been having a little, some health issues. So I wish her well. Recover fast because the city needs you. Hey, brings us to bids. We have bid number 22-030, Big Timber Road Retaining Wall Improvement.
Mayor, make the motion to board the bid to Landscapes by Gary Weiss in the amount of $206,770.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, motion's approved 8-0. Brings us to other business. The first item is a public hearing of petition, petitions 08-22, 09-22, and 10-22, 2,600 to 2,800 North Randall Road, and annexation preliminary final plat of subdivision and plan development as a map amendment for the construction of a three-building light industrial subdivision with the extension of Bussy Parkway. I declare the public hearing open. Mr. Malat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This property, there we go, is located at the southwest corner of Randall Road and Route 72. Here is Randall. There we go. This is Route 72. Dundee Middle School is here. This is the indoor ice skating rink, both of which are in the Village of West Dundee. This is the Northwest Corporate Park in Elgin. Continental Packaging is here, Motorola here. Watermark at the Grove is located there, including 284 apartments with Gabuda Burger and Chipotle anchoring the corner. Village Pizza and Pub is on the opposite corner of Northwest Parkway and Randall, and over here is the Village of Sleepy Hollow. Skanel Properties proposes to develop a 760,000-square-foot light industrial subdivision on this vacant 53 acres of land. The northern 37 acres is unincorporated and offered for annexation. The southern 16 acres is already in the city. Skanel would extend Bussy Parkway from the west to the east, but end it with a cul-de-sac short of Randall. The Kane County Department of Transportation strongly prefers that Bussy not connect to Randall. KDOT controls Randall, and the Illinois Department of Transportation controls Route 72. The subdivision would include three speculative light industrial buildings. Phase 1 would extend Bussy Parkway, install the stormwater detention facility, and construct the two buildings north of Bussy Parkway. The western Lot 1 would front on Route 72 and contain a 473,000-square-foot building. The eastern Lot 2 would front Randall and contain a 136,000-square-foot building. Phase 2 would construct a 150,000-square-foot building on Lot 3, south of Bussy, fronting on Randall. The zoning for the two buildings fronting on Randall would include the flexibility to also allow office and retail if the market so demanded. One example of a use that might take advantage of this flexibility is a home design or fixture showroom. The front showroom would benefit from a retail-like street furniture and the visibility of Randall Road, and the space would still have ample room in the back to store, assemble, manufacture, and ship cabinets, counters, or what have you. Such companies are not reliant on impulse shoppers, so too then they're not entirely dependent upon easy access for their customers. Each lot will have multiple points of access to Bussy Parkway. Lot 1 would also have a right-in, right-out to Route 72. KDOT intends to approve the Randall and Route 72 intersection in 2025. After the improvement, KDOT will construct a new multipurpose path on the west side of Randall as part of a larger countywide bike project. Skanel would construct a sidewalk along Route 72. Finally, Skanel would grant an easement to the city for the consideration of the installation of a future gateway sign along Randall Road. The applicant is present. Should you have any questions? Staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval. Subject to conditions outlined within your packet.
Are there any questions for Mr. Malat or the applicant at this time from the council? Mr. Shaw?
A little bit of the history. I say, welcome back to Elgin. I know this property's kind of been flip-flopped a little bit with some different communities, so welcome to Elgin.
Any questions from anyone in the audience for the developer, Mr. Malat, this time? Any questions from anyone in the audience? Any more questions from the council? Hearing none. I declare the public hearing closed. Brings us to item two, is consideration of the petitions 08-22, 09-22, and 10-22, 2,600 to 2,800 North Randall Road, annexation preliminary and final plat of subdivision and plan development as a map amendment for the construction of a three, of three-building light industrial subdivision with the extension to Bussy Parkway. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 8-0. Congratulations. Good luck. I know you do good work. Look forward to it. Item three is a resolution approving a grant recipient eligibility list, under the 50-50 and 75-25 Historic Architectural Rehabilitation Grant Programs. Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 7-1. Item four is a resolution approving annual membership renewal with Metro West Council of Government for May 2022 to April 2023. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
No.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
No.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 6-2. Item five is a resolution authorizing execution of a temporary construction easement agreement with Chicago Land Trust Company as trustee under a trust agreement dated September 24, 2018, and known as Trust Number 8002379099 for the purposes of repairing and restoring a retaining wall at 1895 Big Timber Road. Move approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second for approval. Any discussion?
Supposedly better do this before you approve the bid.
Through discussion, any, please, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 8-0. Item six is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to real estate contract for the purchase of 356 to 358 Dundee Avenue. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 8-0. Consent agenda.
Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 8-0. Miscellaneous business. Move for approval?
Second.
Moved in second for approval. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, the motion's approved 8-0. Announcements. The next committee of the whole meeting will be Wednesday, June 22, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Elgin City Council chambers. The next regular meeting of the Elgin City Council will be Wednesday, June 22, 2022, at 7:00 PM in the City Council chambers. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Dixon?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Stefan?
Yes.
Thorne?
Yes.
Mayor Captain?
Yes, we are adjourned. Have a good evening.